All right. Good evening, everyone. It is May 21st, 2024. This is the board. Work session. Give it a sign. Board work session meeting to discuss the district's enrollment growth and levies. I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Dr. Dabberco.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Schreiber.
Here.
All right. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't believe that we have any amendments to the agenda, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
All right, good. So we only have one agenda item tonight. We're here to discuss the enrollment growth as well as the failure of the levy in the March and the steps that we're going to take in the future. This is a board work session. It is not, we're not making formal decisions tonight, but we're really talking through some of this. We've asked a number of members of the district leadership team to be here as well with us to discuss that. The, I think, thinking about this and talking with Mr. Meyer, we came up with three primary parts of what we want to discuss tonight. First, we want to talk about where we are now. What happened with the ballot issue in the spring? Why we came to that decision to do that? Any thoughts that we have around the nature of that whole process? And the takeaways from that? Second, we, as we have talked all the way through this, the district is going to need to go back on the ballot at some point. We're facing too much enrollment growth that, you know, not going through another levy cycle is not an option. So we've asked the district leadership team to come up with some scenarios for different timing and what that will look like to the community. We want to talk about those, get some thoughts and understand, you know, where all of that stands. Again, not to make a decision on the specific timing of that, but really to have a full discussion about some of the the different ideas and assumptions that would be baked into that and the steps that we would take. Finally, after we walk through all of that, then we want to identify the takeaways or next steps that we want to do as we continue to have this discussion. As we've said in every meeting that we've had following up on the levy, this is something that we're trying to do as publicly as possible. And to really involve the community in this, I see we have a couple of community members here, which we appreciate. Hopefully, we have thousands more watching at home, but if not, we'll, you know, hope that you can catch it later when we'll be posting online. But this is a true community discussion. We've been hearing a lot of things that have been going on after the levy vote, during the levy vote, and we want to continue to discuss those. So that's the rough agenda, I think, that we'll walk through today. I suspect this will not be our only work session on these over time, especially as we're continuing to evaluate that, but that's at least a good start for tonight. Moving to the first part, I'll frame up the discussion slightly and then I'll invite others to chime in their thoughts. But obviously, we were on the ballot in March for a three mil operating levy, a 1.25 mil permanent improvement levy, and a new village on that would have allowed us to build five, so just three elementaries, a middle school and a high school. As we were discussing this, you know, obviously, other board members can chime in here as we talked about it, but there were a number of things that were really going through our heads as we were looking at it. First and foremost is the tremendous growth that the district has been facing and is continuing to face. We've seen, you know, we've seen this growth over the past 10 years and we're projecting another 5,000 students or so over the next 10 years after that. Going along with that is the cost of this growth. From a pure building perspective, we've seen the effects of inflation and the ways that that is continuing to impact our construction costs, something we have to factor in, as well as just all of the other things that it takes to run a school district. And then certainly, the proactive timing of it all to try to save money for the community. This is a community that has traditionally supported its schools, that has put a lot of time and energy into it, and we have to be sensitive to those costs on the community. Some of the challenges that we were thinking about, certainly at the very beginning, was the rapid development of this area that goes hand in hand with the enrollment growth. Obviously, people have very mixed feelings about development. That impacts things a lot. We had the reevaluation that was certainly a factor as we were going through all of this. So that's the rough agenda, I think, that we'll walk through.
Playback. Do we need to bring the elementary schoolers back to?
Yeah, show me how to use it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No worries. No worries. And then certainly, the community reliance, the reliance on the community over time, the cost of the community, the impact of the fair school funding program and the state funding. So those were certainly some challenges. But I think it would be helpful for us to just kind of discuss this in a bit of a roundtable as we think about, you know, some of those effects, some of the things that we were going into our minds, and some of those things that we're continuing to see as challenges here. So I'll open it up for others to, you know, to share thoughts on that. We could certainly approach it from a series of question and answer, but if anybody has any other thoughts there. Good.
Well, I guess maybe I'll chime in because I was not on the board last time, so I don't know if there's anything else that you guys need to add, but just sort of the thoughts of going this spring, I think you touched on a lot of the main things, like trying to avoid future costs of inflation, trying to stay ahead of our enrollment so we don't have overcrowded buildings. In the meantime, while we wait for things to get built, is there anything else that you can think of that, just to kind of get a better sense of what were the main motivating factors behind going on in spring of '24 versus any other time?
Yeah. And that's a good question. It's something we've heard from the community. And maybe, Jeff, you can speak a little bit about sort of the nature of the construction process and how that's affecting some of it. Certainly, our facilities committee, as they've been working through some of the enrollment projections, that led a bit to some of that decision-making process. So maybe you could talk just about the lead time and what we're seeing from a long-term perspective relative to that.
Yeah. The timing and concern with lead times was part of the discussion, given where the enrollment projections were putting us with students coming in. So in order to get started with the buildings in time to open them, to meet that enrollment, we were seeing 55-week lead times on chillers and switchgear generators, other equipment. So from the facilities committee's perspective, that the sooner that we were able to get those things in order and get started with the buildings, the better in order to meet, have the buildings open in time for the, to meet the enrollment projections that were coming in. The other aspect of it from the facilities committee discussion was the PI, the way that we had funded the capital improvements previously, when 2016 and 2020, we were able to add to the millage for the PI, but we'd also funded a portion of that through bond funds that were estimated or scheduled to over a five-year period. And we were running out that five-year period's ending, so significant drop in our PI funding for repairs and maintenance of the buildings was ongoing. So from the facilities committee's standpoint, it was those two things were the driver to make sure that we were able to continue to fund our repairs and maintenance to the buildings, as well as then start the construction process in time to have them built for when we needed them for student enrollment.
Yeah. I just want to emphasize the PI, because we did, we talked a lot about that, and we talk about the need for new construction because of the 5,000 students projected to enroll in Owentangie over the next 10 years. But every year, our existing buildings continue to age. So as a district, we've been extremely proactive in maintaining those buildings, and it's critical for us to continue to be able to maintain buildings, because if not, that becomes a huge challenge for us around having dollars for capital improvements and then for sure, the cost of deferred maintenance. So if we continue to kick the can down the road, so to speak, that cost increases and can become extremely costly. We were having a conversation today, Mr. Gordon and I, he just talked about the lead time of a chiller. So without dollars or planning ahead for, then we're going to have to start moving money around based on reaction. And if a chiller goes down, it's nine months to get a chiller. So, you know, that's going to be a challenge for us as our buildings continue to age.
Along those lines, because I think it's a, trying to be proactive, you avoid some of that stuff. I mean, obviously, things can happen at any point, but you know that as things get older, they're going to wear down more. If we were to say, have a chiller go out, and we just can't get one, right, in nine months, what is our plan for, say, an elementary school? What do we do then in that situation?
Yeah. And just to preface that a little bit with, we know which chillers we are having issues with, and we have proactively tried to change those chillers out, because it's rare that you get a whole chiller go out, but you'll get half a chiller go out where one side of that will go out. When that happens and you're waiting on parts, then the machine's working twice as hard and running 24 hours a day, then you're more likely to have that second part of the second phase of the chiller go out. So that's been a risk for us, only having one chiller at the elementary and the middle school buildings. But it's been a calculated risk, because we know where we're having issues, and we've kept those up to date and replaced those chillers proactively, so that we're not at risk of having something that's so far poorly maintained or old that there's a risk of it all going out. So we've got that. If one goes out, the hope is that it's half a side of a chiller, and we're able to order one compressor and have half a chiller running. The other options are to rent a chiller if you can find one, and depending on time of year and what issues others have had, sometimes you can do that, but that's also costly to rent a chiller. And then the third option is go without air conditioning, which, you know, schools do do in Ohio. We can't go without heat, but that's, we have a heat backup, you know, we always have two boilers or three boilers in some cases, but with the chiller, that's what you take with the cost of being efficient, is having one chiller, because you can operate with only, without air conditioning, you can't operate without heat.
Do you have any idea, Mr. Gordon, and it's hard to predict when the brakes are going to go, but when do you get to the point with the current dedicated preventative maintenance resources? When do you get to the point, best guess, that you could say, you know what? By about this time, we're going to switch over from being able to do preventative stuff, and then we're just going to be whack-a-mole?
Well, in the packet that we handed out was the, I included a five-year improvement projection, which was the same format that I present every year on the five-year. So with this, what I did is I put the fiscal year '25 that we presented, I presented actually in January, and I just re-projected, for example, I talked about those bond dollars for roofing and mechanicals and school bus replacements. Okay, here's what's left. And now we go from, our plan had been with the passage of additional PI funds, we would replace, we were going to replace a chiller at Glen Oak this year. We're no longer doing that. So what I've done is taken the mechanical funds, the bus replacement funds, and the roof replacement funds. We've now spread those out for maintaining of, like, mechanical equipment, maintaining of roofs. It's no longer replacements, it's just maintaining. And if you look at that on the bond portion on the top in the light blue, you see that school bus replacements fully moved to PI funding, out of the PI funds for fiscal year '27. And the roof replacements, they actually, the replacements stop in fiscal year '25, and the $300,000 a year I have in there is about what we spend now just to do repairs and small maintenance on our roofs. So we're going forward at the point, after this summer's work that you approved last month, we'll just be maintaining roofs as opposed to proactively replacing roofs. And we'll be maintaining mechanical equipment going forward as opposed to planned replacements.
So after this summer?
After this summer. We do have the contingency at the bottom that we've been setting aside and building since the 2020 PI levy passed. That's kind of our contingency. For a hot water tank, for domestic hot water, we have units that we keep one on hand, because we've standardized those and we can replace that. With a chiller, you can't keep a chiller on hand. There's so much diversity in what you have and difference in sizes. You can't just have a chiller and put it in, and that's the disadvantage we have. So we do have that contingency that we've kind of built up for something like this, but we're not proactively. That's a replacement when something's fully out, and then we're waiting, waiting on that. So, but we are, we are at that point now where we're just actively maintaining as opposed to proactively replacing ahead of time.
Do you have a sense, recognizing that the answer to this is probably, I prefer not, any of it, right? But do you have a sense for how long we can be in that sort of phase before we're going to run into more serious problems? I mean, something can always go, right? But what realistically, how much time can that buy us?
Yeah. That's a loaded question, because I don't know it. You know, we have a great HVAC maintenance staff. We proactively do preventative maintenance, loops, changing of belts, those type of thing. So it's, it's, our equipment tends to last, and that's why when we do replacements, we know which ones have given us trouble. It's not always the oldest. It's the one that maybe we've had the most repairs or is costing us the most money. So I think mechanically, we were able to do a lot of replacements. Roofing, we've been, we've been slowly trying to catch up with roofing. With some, you know, Liberty High School, I mentioned before that we've done replacements there earlier than expected. There's older roofs that we've not addressed at this point, whereas because of taking on some other buildings that really needed it. But we're at the point now where some of those roofs, we've got a lot of them, because we're hitting that period where between 2000, 2010, we built so many buildings. Well, now those buildings are 20 years old. They're 25 years old. So we're hitting a period where that's just the amount of roofing we have to maintain or repair is hitting that age. And that's one of the things kind of fell behind. The mechanical systems came sooner. Their life expectancy was about five years less. Now we're hitting the same thing with roofing that we hit five years ago with mechanicals. So I really, that's going to start shooting up and escalating now, just based on the age of the buildings and the roofs. So we'll do what we can to continue to be, you know, proactive in maintaining and trying to address seams and things, but the material does wear, and we're at the point now where the roofs are, we're hitting that period where the, we're going, hitting that 25 years to 35 years over the next 10 years. So we're heading into a pretty critical phase, just based on where our buildings are aging and when they were built, and the amount that were built in such a short period of time.
So, I mean, we could certainly go into a lot of this, and this is, you know, where the facilities committee is always such a great committee to talk about this, because, you know, we get into a lot of those details. But it's not just the buildings. It's also, you know, some of the extracurricular surfaces, like tracks and things like that, that very much affect the student experience. Can you maybe talk a little bit about that and sort of the maintenance of that?
Yeah. It's, so we're at the point with 10, we have 10 all-weather, all-weather track surfaces, as well as tennis courts for the high schools. So we're either doing a tennis court surface replacement or partial replacement every year. And that's somewhere, depending on whether it's tennis court or a track, between $300,000 to $400,000 if you're not getting into the base work. So going forward, that's something that significantly, if you look at that five years, I've got $300,000 allocated in athletics. Well, that replacement of just that one track surface, that, you know, it's maintaining those, if we're going to have competitions, we have to maintain that. But that doesn't leave extra money in the athletic budget at that point for PI for things like replacing light poles, or fencing, or scoreboards, or any of those things that we're actively maintaining. And because of the age of the buildings, and two of our, when Liberty High School was built, we replaced the stadium at Owentangie High School. So they both were put in about 2003. So they're now at 22 years old, and that's why that was part of the bond on the levy, was doing the lighting replacement and fencing, because of the age of those are at that point. So, and so as the scoreboards. So we're at this point, based on the budget, and you see when we start pulling buses out of PI and where those asphalt drops, all those other categories drop. So if we have a scoreboard go out, or something happens where we have to do two tracks in a year or something there, then that money comes from somewhere else, some other category down that list, whether it's flooring or the piece of mechanical we have in there, electrical repairs, somewhere else that has to come from, because that's limited to the PI funding you see on that sheet. So all of those get impacted. Once you start taking from one, or you have to double up on something else, or if we have a chiller go out, we've got that contingency, they'll cover a portion of a chiller. But if we have two or three chillers go out before we are able to build that contingency back up, there's, that money's not there, it'll start coming out of PI. So that's, again, becomes less flooring, or less electrical repairs, or any of those other things that, again, we try to do proactively.
Are we net positive on athletics? Do we make money on the tournaments that covers all these repairs? Or does that come out of, in other words, we're paying for this out of, as opposed to something else we might want to do?
Outside of booster donations for scoreboards and those type of things, all of the athletic surfaces and athletic competition areas are maintained through the PI fund. So resurfacing of a basketball court, or resurfacing of a tennis court, turf replacements, the programs help fund those, and in 10 years, we'll have that. But, you know, just maintaining and grooming and doing all of the maintenance on those existing, we do out of the PI fund.
So is the PI fund part of our per pupil?
Yes.
I would be curious to know what, what is the dollar amount per pupil that we spend on athletics or arts? You know what I mean? So if we spend $100 per pupil, what is the dollar amount that we spend on non-classroom? And I'm not talking about administrative, I'm talking about like, you see where I'm going. He gave me the affirmative head nod.
Well, I think it's, I was nodding since I was listening and understanding. I think it's, you're really looking at two buckets, right? You're looking at your coaching, your, in those things, then you're specifically talking about just maintaining of facilities per pupil?
I'm talking everything, because we're not required by the state to provide certain things, or there's other ways that we could think about funding those things. I'm just wondering what, what per pupil we spend.
Yeah.
And obviously, that's not the tip of your fingers, but I'd be curious to know that, because, you know, if you're prioritizing stuff, and that's what you have, right? That's what you have to do when times are tough and you're staring at deficits in the fifth year that are breathtaking. You're prioritizing, and when you prioritize, you might not get to the sixth or seventh thing, because you don't have the resources. So I would be curious to know, what are we spending on stuff? We have to put classroom teachers in, but we don't have to provide tennis courts. We have to put, have buildings, but they don't have to be ones with a foundation. They could be trailers. We have to provide learning spaces, but they don't have to have air conditioning. So I'm just curious about, like, what are the, like, what are those costs?
I think between Mr. Jenkins and I, we certainly could put that cost together. I think we would look at it in two buckets, the general fund coverage of athletics for expenses, as well as then what the PI or permanent improvement costs we spend on athletics. I really think it's two different buckets we'd want to look at to fully understand.
I wouldn't just single out athletics.
Sure, sure.
It's going to be broadly any co-curricular.
Yeah, I had mine, arts, or anything that doesn't have to be, what else am I missing besides arts? Arts, athletics.
Band?
Band, for sure.
Or just general curriculum. There's minimum state standards, so.
Sure.
There are a lot of areas that, I mean, if you ask and frame that question around fill-in-the-blank X.
Right.
Extracurriculars, athletics, curriculum.
Transportation.
Operations, transportation, support services, purchase services. That could be a really broad discussion, depending on the bucket or group that we look at. But your question is, as a district, you eventually have to make decisions around some of those things on what we have to provide.
Yeah.
Not picking on athletes, I promise.
No, I know, right. But I'm just saying, it's a, you know, we could have, you could frame the same question around a lot of things.
Yeah. And I think the bigger question, when we're talking about, you know, what does the district value? And what are we providing to the student experience? And so, for example, a track, we might ask a booster club to resurface a track, because sometimes they raise money for certain types of athletics facilities and then donate it to the district. But then you get into questions of which boosters are able to raise that sort of money and which ones aren't, and which students are then able to participate and which ones aren't, if they can't individually, from their families, you know, donate a certain amount, or, you know, if they can't, if they can't make up the difference between what the district provides and what the family is expected to provide for a certain activity, and then what does that do for, you know, everybody in the district?
Yeah. I think it's an equity issue, right? If you're going to, if you're going to, you can't have a track at one high school that's not capable, you know, can't hold a track meet at, but then the other three high schools are doing that. So it's, it's across the board.
Yeah. I just think, if we go down this path, we just need to not look at just the expense side, right? You would want to look at, we have specific participation fees that cover athletic expenses. We have booster support that covers athletic expenses. And make sure you capture not just the cost per pupil, but look at the revenue side as well.
Yeah, I think that was a good point that we kind of.
Because you've got consumption fees that are specific to certain activities, and we've set those fees up by design to say, okay, those who use the services should pay for the services, right? And it would be, actually, we'd be interested to see net of fees, net of booster. What portion of athletics or co-curriculars does the general fund actually bear? Because it's not 100%.
Right. And you extend that to other equity stuff, too, because I don't go to all the events, but there seems like a lot of people at football and a lot of people at basketball, but not so many at my son's wrestling matches. So, and then you talk about the gender disparity between, you know, I'm sure that happens in college as well. Like, there's a lot of money in football, but not so much in rowing. So that's a great question to offset that. Just curious.
Well, I'm like, the income that you said, like, not just expenses, but income of selling tickets, of selling memorabilia, of, you know, I know people talked about, if you want to dive into the branding, but that allows us to also license the mascots and those sorts of things, so we can earn income, and the schools can earn income on those things. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't want to be a wet blanket. But the kind of revenue that you're talking would be outrageous to, for example, we spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $4.5 to $5 million a year just from the general fund to support salaries and benefits on supplementals. If we were to try to come up with a model, and I'm not saying you want to go that far, but if you were trying to come up with a model where athletics were self-sufficient, based on a combination of student fees and/or fill-in-the-blank, you're talking $1,200, $1,300 a student.
But when you say supplementals, you're also talking about building, some of it's contractual supplemental, because you've got.
I only pulled.
Reference to just athletics.
I only pulled extracurricular with a 4,500-function sports and activities. So right now, at $80 per pupil, our families are probably providing a 5% to 10% total subsidy of what comes out of the general fund to run athletic programs. Then the day-to-day supplies, materials, and equipment come from the ticket sales and gate receipts. And I'm talking paying officials, I started to say lining the fields, but we have so many that are turf now, buying basketballs, putting nets on the hoop, that sort of thing. But the expenses that go into things like turf, or putting in new lighting or new flooring in gymnasiums are pretty well our permanent improvement with the two levies that we have. Gross millage about 1.5 mils, but effective mils about .93.
And Ryan, when you say 1,200, you're not talking about the repairs to the facility. You're talking specifically about.
If we do repairs to the facility on top of it, that might double or triple.
Right.
Because ostensibly.
Or transportation.
You would only charge those who participate. So you could have operational costs. When I say operational, the salaries, benefits, portion of transportation that goes into, then if you're going to look at the capital costs, it could add up pretty quickly. And I'm not trying to be difficult. It's just a whole lot more than a lot of people realize.
Well, and it, but it's also not all or nothing. It's not completely subsidized.
Yeah, not implying that it's zero, but I didn't know how far we wanted to go. Yeah, not implying that it's zero, but I didn't know how far we wanted to go with all these different revenue streams, and thinking of, you know, maybe we could get to where the cost of athletic programming was neutral to the district. It's just probably not even remotely possible.
And, I mean, there, again, all of this is fairly premature, and premature is even a loaded word, because it suggests, oh, we're going to get there, you know, at some point.
Sure.
And maybe not, right? But, it's the sort of tough questions that have to start to come out, as we think about that. Even that sort of pay-to-play idea has massive equity implications.
Sure.
Because if you say, you know, to get up at the upper end, we're talking $1,300 a student, there are some families that absolutely can afford that. Nobody wants to pay that, but there are some families that can't afford it. And there are some families that it would be just completely impossible, right? We do have, you know, families living in poverty or near poverty, right? So, it absolutely goes to equity of experience. That's something we certainly have to keep in mind. I don't want to get too bogged down just in those basic things, right? But, I mean, I think that this is, this highlights some of the challenging decisions that have to come with, you know, a district that has become really well-known for having a lot of options and those sorts of things, and there's a high cost that comes with maintaining that. I do think it would be helpful to talk a little bit about the academic impact of this, especially with the growth, and how that plays into the classroom, right? So, Michelle, Jack, maybe both of you can talk to this a little bit. But, as we're, we don't have the new buildings, we don't, we have an uncertain future as to when those new buildings are going to be coming online. In the meantime, we've got to manage it, just like we have to manage with the facility side. So, what does that look like on a day-to-day basis? Obviously, it has an impact on the student experience, it has an impact on the staff experience as well. So, maybe you all can talk about that a little bit.
Sure. So, as the enrollment continues to grow in an individual school, the first level of flexibility really starts with the staff, and then moving around as much as possible. Moving staff is easier than moving kids, right? So, you know, the term "art on a cart" is something that educators are familiar with. But, so, you know, we'll start by moving the staff through the school, and rotating them to wherever education can take place. But then, obviously, you know, I think it was last month, I talked to you about, you know, overflow, modulators, and redistricting, as our options for moving students, once moving staff and students within the school is no longer an option, we have to look at, how can we position them at other schools? And then, it just gets more and more complicated from that point forward. And, we're not there yet, but we would start to have to talk about programmatic changes, whether it be in, you know, the phrase that's often used is split sessions. Like, if a high school has so many students that they can't all physically be in the school at one time during the school day, basically, students get split into two groups, and they attend at two different points of the day. So, you start to get really creative with the scheduling of how students come to school, and the timing that they come to school.
Like year-round school, too?
Year-round school could be something that could be explored, for sure.
Do you have contract problems with that? Because isn't start and start, start and finish time part of your contract?
Start and finish time is part of the contract, yeah.
So, that would have to be addressed?
Yeah.
Because if you're talking about starting later, earlier, all that, that would have to be a change.
If we were to go outside the bounds of the contract, absolutely, yeah. We're not currently like at our total bounds that the contract provides, right now. So, there's flexibility within our contract, that there are changes that could be made within the contract. So, I'm not saying that any change would have to be contractually negotiated. But, year-round school, absolutely. A split session, if we're going to keep kids, I think our contract puts a, the end day at like 4:00 or 4:05 PM. So, if we're going to keep kids later than that, that would have to be something that would need to be renegotiated, for sure.
I guess with a failed levy, doesn't it give us additional choices relative to the contract?
Uh, in some.
Because some things couldn't be triggered until you failed a levy. We've now failed a levy.
Mm-hmm.
So, does that open up different choices?
In some areas, yeah.
So, for staffing, so, we failed a levy, so we do have language for reduction in staff. As far as the parameters around the school day, we also, that's negotiated agreement, so we would have to go back and have conversations about changing the school day. And Dr. Fetti referenced the elementary. So, we have parameters at the high school level, middle school, and elementary level in the contract. So, that's something that we would have to have conversations about.
Are you thinking, Mr. Bryan, are you thinking like, like, you know, we get, going way down the rabbit hole to the center of the earth, you get fiscal distress, like, contracts are, right, like, contracts are done, right?
No, we are far from fiscal distress.
Of course, of course, of course. But, you're just talking about contract, you're talking about contract language that lets us move the school day or something.
Specific language in our contract, that once a levy fails, it gives us more latitude to operate. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, yes, there is some language unique to some groups, specific classifications of employees, yeah.
And again, putting all options at stake, but we need to explore, what does that mean? Is it worth going after, or is it not?
Sure, yeah.
Is there any, and this is more of like an education or question, is there any option to do like an online school for the families who choose to do that, to reduce in-person crowding?
Sure.
Or is that something that's not available because of the legislature and the way that they set up the rules for online school?
So, I mean, we would have to decide, as a, the board would have to first decide if they want to have an online school. But, yes, online education is an option that we could pursue in the future. Whether or not it would save cost would be something we'd really have to study. You know, through our experience with CDL, I think we, I don't know that we could say we saved cost or not. Ryan, you weren't necessarily here for it, but.
Certainly, there was still the staffing need.
There's definitely a staffing need, there's not a facility need so much, but there is still facility need, because the state requires in-person testing and certain things at certain times, is my understanding. So, we did a full study of it a few years ago, presented it to the board at the time, something that we chose not to do at that time. So, if that were something we wanted to pursue, we could go down that road. But, based on what I recall right now, not a huge financial savings there. Definitely a facility savings in some respects, but presents other issues as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, just my recollection with that is, wouldn't we have to open a full school? If we, like, you couldn't do sort of pockets of that, it would have to be one dedicated online school.
Yeah. Yeah, so, the school would have to have a, what's called an IRN, like a unique identifier. So, that's something that didn't have to occur previously. So, in Olentangie, when we talk about online school, we might go back to CDL if we were here during that time. And, you know, a Scioto Ridge student who was a CDL student was still a Scioto Ridge student. Now, if you were going to join the online school, you would opt into that experience, you would no longer be a Scioto Ridge student, you would not be enrolled there at all, and you would have to be in your online school for the entire year. And even if you lived in the Scioto Ridge attendance area, and you decided in September, hey, I changed my mind, I want to go there, it's very likely that we'd have to say to you, you're, that's not an option. You have to be in online school for the rest of the year. Or, we could put you in another school where there's capacity, but that might be over at Walnut Creek this year, or it might be in a modular at Indian Springs, or depending on the year.
But, there was emergency legislation, a lot that happened.
Back then.
Did not get renewed.
Correct.
There was a lot that lapsed.
There was emergency legislation that lapsed, and then there was also new legislation that was introduced that limited our ability to do that, you know?
What have other districts done since that's changed? I'm curious if they stayed with their online options, or they let those disappear?
No, I think both, we've seen districts do both. Some of the large districts that are our size have, they say they have an online school. I can't really speak to those in too much detail, but there's not a lot of enrollment reported for those that I've seen. You know, our alternative option is Oasis. Oasis has a virtual component, but it also has an in-person component, so it's not a full online school. That's the difference about what we're talking about here, is the Oasis student is still enrolled in their home school, attends Oasis, their coursework is done through a computer, but they still have in-person staff, they still have, you know, a physical space that they report to.
Is that only high school?
Middle school and high school, yeah.
Middle school and high school, not for the little ones?
Well, and then there would also be implications for athletes attending a full virtual school.
There could be, we'd have to figure that out.
For our middle school, high school kids, that would be a whole other thing to figure out, because they wouldn't necessarily be part of, they couldn't be part of the team.
Well, yeah, I mean, nothing else, I mean, I believe the way, Randy, I'm going to make sure I'm saying this truth here, but the way athletic participation is currently is, anyone, like a homeschool student can participate in district athletics, right?
Yes, at the attendance area that they reside at.
So, you know, if, the null would be that they would still be able to participate in the school in the area in which they reside. I think that would go back to that, if we didn't apply some other rule to them. So, they still could participate in district athletics the same way any other student could.
Athletics and co-curriculars.
And co-curriculars, yeah.
And, I mean, do you hear, does anybody ask about like, when they're enrolling, I'd like the online option? I mean, is there even a demand for that?
Um, there are certainly people who, I think, would enjoy it, and occasionally, it comes up. I don't know that there's a critical mass that would make it close to economically feasible.
There's some kind of tipping point to get to scale. If you did it for 100 kids, it's not going to make sense.
Right.
You've got to get to some scale.
Yeah. The reality is, the state offers a virtual charter school, that is an option for students. And, you know, if there is a family that really wants to be all virtual, that's an option. That, if a family were to call and say, I need this, and I need this now, that is an option that's available to them, that, my understanding is, the school provides you with a device, and I understand that's a charter school that competes with us for public dollars, but, you know, if it's in the best interest of the student, go for it.
So, you know, along with that, we're talking about some of just the procedural impacts of this, but maybe talk about the impacts to the students, you know, from a pure academic experience.
Yeah.
Because what we're talking about here certainly will have some impacts in that regard. So, you know, again, both the students and then also the staff experience of what we're seeing in that regard.
You want to talk about some of the, maybe, state minimums and program?
Sure, we have, there are state minimums for credits for our students. The state minimum is 20. Credits, however, Olentangie students, our requirement is 22 credits. So, if we're looking at, you know, just meeting that state minimum, it would be the 20 credits. The differential in those two credits that we have deemed that we expect our graduates to have primarily fall in the area of electives, from fine arts to personal finance and other electives for students. So, in terms of that state minimum, there's also, we can consider looking at assessment, state minimums, in other words, for our gifted population, what we are required, and when we are required to assess students. We do currently assess students three times, but by law, we're once per grade band, which would be twice. And some other testing opportunities for kids, such as our, you know, PSAT testing, things like that, that we provide, is not necessarily a state requirement to do so. Additionally, on the other end of looking at minimum programming, of course, in the fall, as you know, our literacy requirements are in House Ball 33, and also adding in our high dosage tutoring for students. Currently, in the Senate, and actually, sitting in the House, passed by the Senate, is a bill to do a similar improvement model for students in math. So, also putting into place RIMPs for our third grade students in math, which would then require us to have a core curriculum there, and then also provide high dosage tutoring for students. So, I think there's two ends of the spectrum here, that state legislation that's mandating these additional pieces, but then also looking at, well, what are the minimums to balance that, those two ends?
Mr. Wright chaired a couple board meetings ago. What are we, 20% over our minutes? Well, just something like that, something.
Well, we have 25 additional days when we make, when we compute the hours.
The, and I just want to add, just overarching, obviously, as our schools continue to grow, we, Ms. Schreiber mentioned student experience. So, student experience, as far as increased class sizes, electives that students may not be able to take because they're full, so making different decisions as far as offerings. Obviously, when you get into the extracurricular and co-curricular activities, the larger our schools reduces opportunities for students as well. So, as far as student experience, that for sure comes into play when we increase capacity, student enrollment, and class sizes in the school. We talked a lot through the, throughout our community conversations at the levy, in particular in our elementary schools, because the increase in our students with disability and special needs population, and the service that they need, which the ratios for class sizes are smaller, so we only have so many rooms in a school. So, therefore, then, schools have to make decisions on how they're providing tutoring outside of a classroom, or making accommodations where they can fit to provide that service in the schools. Our EL population has increased, it's quadrupled since 2017, which we have to provide resource and the educational experience for our EL students. So, it does present a challenge, the larger our schools, the larger that population, if we don't have space.
Right. And so, I think this goes to the question that you asked earlier, which, you know, is part of the decision to go on the ballot, and we did. Some of these things are not at critical spots right now, right? But, we know that it takes three years to build a high school, and so, as we're looking down the line, you know, that made sense, and we felt like we could sort of maintain things for a little while. But, as that goes longer and longer, especially as we see some of the growth up in the northern part of the district, and I'm going to have to offset that, because we're just not going to be able to accommodate every student that's in the Berlin area at Berlin High School, you know, that's going to start shifting downward to some of those other ones, and that's really going to impact that over time.
Sure. And then, exactly right. So, we were being proactive in trying to establish, in order to accommodate the growth, and are proactive instead of being reactive, because the longer we wait, obviously, the population continues to increase in the schools, so the things that we just mentioned will start to take effect at all levels, so elementary, middle school, and high school. So, I, today, just, we're getting into enrollment, so I took our forecasted enrollment. So, we gained, just in one week, 43 students, and every week, we will, we will enroll more students for next year, for '24, '25. So, 43 students in one week. Some school districts don't get an additional 43 students in three years. So, when I looked at, again, based on our forecast enrollment from October, which will be updated again in this October, and then our student potential analysis, so, at the middle school, we're right on pace or mark of what was projected. So, next year, three of four of our high schools will be over capacity. Middle school, three of six of our middle schools will be at or over capacity, exactly what the numbers showed. And then, currently, we have one, two, three, four, five, so we were projected nine of our elementaries would be at or over capacity today, so before the school year even starts. Five are already at or over capacity, and the other four are right on pace. So, from the projections, the enrollment's not stopping, so it presents a space challenge, for sure. So, enrollment, that's, so some of these decisions that we're going to continue to have to make as a district, because we're all, and I said this at the last boarding, we're always going to look at students and families as students and families, and not numbers. We want to provide the best experience we can, but it's going to come at a cost, because we're going to have to make some decisions here moving forward, where we're going to, we're going to have to stop to take some of those things away that we're talking about. So, that's where we are.
Well, and I think I heard a few people say, well, if we get to that point, and we start taking away some of that stuff, then people won't move here anymore. But, realistically, that sort of timeline wouldn't be until after we've already had this experience where our schools are very overcrowded, and then the actual experience starts to deteriorate, right? We don't, we don't want to, we don't want to mitigate our growth by decreasing the student experience and the academic experience.
Well, you framed a great question, what do we value here? And we've built, when I say we, the community, Olentangie, we have built a strong brand, a great reputation, and great schools. We have great staff, because, and I won't even talk about the recruitment and the retention, and how we're able to do that, because that's just another layer. But, the question is, what do we value? And, it comes down to the student experience and what we provide. We just graduated over 1,800 students on Sunday, just a phenomenal celebration. And- And I'm confident, we're all confident, that we're sending those 1,800-plus students off prepared for the next chapter.
And, you know, frankly, I'm skeptical of the idea that even if we went to bare minimums, that people would stop moving here, because it's a housing supply issue, given the growth in the area.
You're right. And we talked about that this morning, Mr. Lester and I, absolutely.
But even then, I mean, I completely agree with you, Ryan. Like, we have, you know, we are a model school district for the state, and it's not just because, you know, we get high test scores, it's because of that experience. It's why people come here for the English language, it's why people come here for the student services, for students with disabilities or other sorts of things. And that's not something that we want to lose. I think the challenge is how you maintain that
Right.
in the face of an uncertain financial future.
And that's what I was talking about, because we, as a district, when I say "we," our staff's extremely committed to that experience, district leadership team, our administrators. We do so many, make so many decisions to accommodate, to make sure that we're doing the best that we can with what we're given to provide that experience. But it will continue just to become more challenging. Lack of resources, which money's a part of that, to maintain facilities, lack of resources as far as facilities, because our class sizes continue to grow, so it's, it'll continue to be a challenge.
So I hate to cut off this discussion. I feel like we could do this for hours and hours, right? But we've been going about 50 minutes now, and I think it will be helpful maybe now to pivot. Obviously, if anybody has other thoughts, happy to come back as we go through. But it might be helpful now to pivot and go to the different scenarios of what the next options look like in terms of timing. Obviously, we have different election cycles that we're looking at, so, you know, now we're looking at fall this year, spring next year, fall, you know, fall next year, spring, fall, spring, fall, over and over and over again. What we asked the team to do is to put together, really for the next, you know, three, four of those cycles, what it might look like if we were to go on the ballot, what those different things, those different options would look like at that point. Things can change over time, different assumptions could get baked in, but at least our best guess is this one. So, you know, Mr. Meyer, maybe you want to lead that, and...
Yeah.
I guess go ahead. Yeah. Because I don't think we could say it enough. So, we went on the ballot in the spring, didn't wait till we were on the brink of fiscal disaster. We tried to do it in a proactive way. It failed, and the message was clear, right? So now, we're going to have to make some different decisions on timing, and size, and what we want to take on our wins. So I think it's important to make that transition, because a lot of people are saying, "Well, why aren't you rushing back to the ballot?" Well, because we didn't wait till we're on the brink of fiscal disaster, right? We can make decisions, they may be long-term, suboptimal, but we have to make some decisions around how we move forward. So I think it's important to...
Exactly. And I'll go back to the why in the spring was enrollment growth. So we were trying to be proactive, to be able to accommodate the growth that's coming and continues to come financially.
And for people to be aware, like, the elementary schools, it would have allowed us to open those following year because of the one-year lead cycle. You know, as opposed to doing it this fall, it would not have allowed for that.
Correct. So, exactly. So that was the soonest that we could open the buildings, the two elementaries, by being in the spring.
Proactive. That means less expensive as well, because this all gets...
Yes. And I'm sure this is going to be a lot of the discussion, because as we go through these scenarios, you will see the increase in cost construction, because that's one of our challenges. Every year we wait, construction costs go up. So we'll, certainly the spring ballot issue of the 4.25, so the three-mill operating, 1.25 PI, the no new village, five buildings, is still technically on the table. However, we're going to move forward to the scenarios that we're going to discuss here, and we have three scenarios. So I want to start with scenario A, fall 2024 ballot with considering just a no-new village for the bond for, and we break this scenario A into two parts. Three buildings, which addresses the immediate need, and then five buildings, and I'll say intermediate need as we move forward. So you can see, if we're with the no-new village bond, three issues, elementary 18 and 19, you can see the cost, and high school five, the cost there. The bond and capital needs shortfall and other contingencies for five years, because we would be taking that off. So if we can get more into detail, Jeff put together what that means, because we would be using, again, going back to what we traditionally, maybe the last two levies, a strategy was to use bond dollars for capital projects for permanent improvements. So you can see that there in the bullet, and then we can talk more about that.
Todd, sorry to interrupt, but just, Jeff, real quick, out of curiosity, our last two elementary schools, basically same building, right?
Correct.
What was the cost of '16 and '17? Do you have those roughly on hand, or do you...
I can have those in just a minute. He'll pull them up. I want to, I'm going to say 27 million.
But I think that that, it highlights what we're talking about here, which is the longer that we wait, these costs go up, right? And not just go up five bucks, but go up significantly.
Right. And you'll see that in these different scenarios as we push them out. So the, and then you can go down to the construction timeline, because again, moving buildings out, there are implications. So you can see the elementary 18 and 19 would now open in '26, '27. If we did the five, elementary 20 and 28, '29, middle school seven, '28, '29, and high school five in '28, '29, because you had already mentioned the length of time it takes to construct a high school.
And just to be clear for those that are listening to this, that's if it passes this fall.
If it passes this fall.
If we went on the ballot this fall, and if it passed, we wouldn't be able to open the next two elementary schools until the '26, '27 school year, the elementary 20 until the '28, '29 school year, middle school seven until the '28, '29, and the high school until '28, '29.
Correct. And if we just did the three buildings, it would be 263 million, no-new village bond, to construct those three buildings. The five, because the PIs tied into that as well, would be 366 million. If you remember back in the spring, we were 350 million.
So would we not consider a mid-year opening of a building? Think what, Big Wallet opened their new high school in the middle of the year? No, they emptied a building, but they opened it in January. As far as I remember, we played the last basketball game at the old building.
Yeah. What's that?
We played the last.
One of the big differences, they weren't splitting schools when they did that. We would not be moving all the kids from one building to another.
They'd ask the question this way, what conditions would have to exist for us to entertain a mid-year open?
Construction timeline for a mid-year opening, because really the...
You could split students off, you know, out of an overcrowded school.
It would just be if we, if, basically timeline, if construction's complete.
Yeah. Where we wouldn't get an advantage is, for example, in the scenarios, if we went on the ballot in the fall, we still couldn't really start construction until the spring. Let's use the elementary as an example, it's a one-year build, but we wouldn't be able to start construction in January, February, it wouldn't pick us up much time. And because of the conditions of getting the footers and things in the ground, it's difficult to do when it's freezing, the ground's frozen in January, February. So with the weather, you're really slowed down, you aren't picking up a ton of time to really...
It's not a mid-year build, it's a mid-year open. Not just this specific scenario, but we historically have not done it, and I get it. But again, we're back to, we're faced with making suboptimal decisions now, and what would have to be true to open them in here.
I think we, you'd let us study that a little bit to think about. I like the way you phrased the question. What conditions would have to be in place for us to be able to do that? That'll take some time for us to kind of vet.
I think, since we're talking the elementary sooner, right, it would seem to me, when you have students that have so much on the line that our high school, it would seem to be harder in high school than it would be, you talk about switching a high school teacher in an AP class, midstream, that's a lot harder than, you know, and I know it's, it's, I'm not minimizing the experience for our little ones, but, you know, it just seems like it would be easier for elementary than it would be for, because then you're talking about, if you do it for a high school, you're trying, what sports teams do you play on?
Yeah, we would have to talk through all that. There would be definitely implications or layers, so...
So same thing. So what would have to be true? It wouldn't be a high school, it would have to be an elementary, or it could be a middle. I mean, what would have to be true, and just at least lay it out. I'm not advocating for it.
Sure.
I think we should at least consider it.
Right.
Well, I think it would be a challenge, too, from some of the busing patterns, right? Because you could say, "Look, we're taking the kids that are in the modulators or the trailers at, you know, this area, we're going to put them there," but they're going to be in all different neighborhoods, right? So you're then rerouting that. So there's some logistical stuff, to be sure. It's a great question.
Our transportation department works magic on a daily basis. I would put, I would put my money on our transportation. But anyways, you're right, that would be, that's another implication as far as operationally, yeah.
But I'm trying to also change our mindset for, here are the 12 reasons why it won't work.
Right.
Versus like, here's how it could happen.
That's right.
The, so forecast implications and C, you can see days cash, three schools without operational village, and where we would sit through fiscal year '28. And obviously, with this, you can see, if you go back in the fall and you're looking at fiscal year '27 with 83 days cash, fiscal year '28 with 10 days cash, we would have to be back on the ballot, and probably '27 at the latest. Right, Ryan?
Prefer '26.
'26 to collect in '27?
Yes.
And then D, we wanted to highlight this, because again, shifting that strategy to what we used to do, and shifting bond dollars to capital improvement funds, what that looks like. It would give an additional 8.3 million over those five years for capital projects, but again, falls back off after the fifth year. And that's what we just talked about. That's what's happening now. And that's really the downside of collecting additional bond money and using it for PI versus having a permanent PI fund.
So, I'll throw this out there. So to take pressure off of PI, would we consider a technology fee? Because a big chunk of the PI is technology network and equipment. If you aggregated all the technologies spent, it's probably the biggest investment in the PI, right? And so there are alternative ways of funding that, other than that. Or, I'm sorry, not that, I spoke. And what would that technology fee look like? Because it won't be small.
Right. And it's going to be the same conversation we just had around athletics, we'd have to run the numbers, but Ryan, what that break-even point would be, it's going to be pretty...
We're trying already, last board meeting, we're doing a lot of rolling leases, so that we can avoid exceptionally large capital expenses, and instead trying to have operational leases.
Ladder-y leases.
Correct. And so we have a lot of those, but yes, if we look at the current split between Mr. Gordon and the business department's needs and the technology needs, strictly out of PI, technology has surged ahead with what they need out of PI to keep themselves viable.
Yeah. Could we not do a five schools without operational village calculation for the days cash? Because it looks like we have the two options of no new village bond for three buildings, and then a no new village bond for five buildings, and then under C, the forecast implications, I just see the three schools without operational village. Did we not do one for five schools without operational village?
It would be essentially the same. The reason is, these days' cash data would have come from the five-year forecast that was approved by the board on May 7. In that forecast, I did not completely remove the possibility of the two elementaries and the high school opening by June 30 of '28. But you won't see all five until we get into the next cycle, because the middle school and elementary 20 were both beyond June 30 of '28. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, the good news is that this wouldn't change. The bad news is, is once we get past July 1,
Right.
that will now pull in.
Well, we have to have 90 days, right, is what the...
Sixty.
Sixty, I'm sorry, okay.
Yep.
So, and obviously, it's, I mean, this is just presenting it purely as getting the schools built, right? So, you know, another option would certainly be to go back with essentially the same package that we went in the spring, right? Which would help our bottom line a little bit, but obviously comes with those challenges.
Correct.
And then, just to be clear, again, this would be to build the buildings, and then ideally by 2026, we'd have to do another levy to ask for operational money only.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so that's, we would do no new village, and then in '26, have to be back on...
So essentially, this is a two-parter kind of vote, because you need the money to run things if you actually build it, right? If you build it, they will come, and then you have to actually run it. And then what happens if that fails, that levy, the operational levy fails? What if we pass the building?
At 10 days cash?
And then we fail the operational levy in '26, or whenever that ends up being on the ballot?
Yeah, so we would look at a resolution to make cuts.
Okay.
Because we, we're talking millions of dollars, and in our business, if you're going to have to save millions of dollars, we're going to have to make cuts. And in education...
Of the kind we were just discussing.
Right.
And you're talking personnel, because that's overwhelming.
People. If you want to move the needle, if you have to cut millions of dollars, yeah, it's going to...
It's not going to be by going to black and white copies.
No, not at all.
And that leads to larger class sizes, fewer supportive
Absolutely.
type of roles?
Support, yep.
Okay.
So as we think of the mental health supports that we provide, the English language supports that we provide, all of that sort of stuff.
So, absolutely.
The math specialists for the...
Yeah, so when we look at that, I classed this morning, we were talking about, so classified it in kind of five buckets as far as cost savings, operational, so busing, for example. State requires us, we could cut two miles and beyond, all two miles and beyond plus high school. So we'd be responsible for transporting K-8 over two miles. So that would be an operational, that's just an example of a cut. Curriculum, we talked a little bit. So you could look at electas, testing, scheduling, graduation requirements, and then you just talked about support related services, as well as the purchase services. We talked today, we spend about $22 million a year on purchase services, so that's something I think that we can continue to look at, but it falls into what Mr. Lester just talked about, mental health support, ESC, professional development, out placements.
So if we can thank you for indulging me in this, but, so the benefit to going on in the fall with this no-new bond village is that we're not asking taxpayers for more money this fall.
Correct.
The downside is that we will have to ask for them eventually, and then we're kind of in a really bad place if that also does not pass.
And we talked about the spring levy, and we didn't mention levy fatigue. So in our district, we heard that, because we've been back on the ballot every three to five years. So we did hear levy fatigue. So here, in this scenario, we would be back on no-new village, even though it's no new tax, it's a vote, and then operational two years later.
Which would be asked.
Which would be asked.
But you're already, you're already assuming those teachers, because you're already assuming the growth, right, in the forecast. So our forecast already shows those teachers, whether they teach it in overcrowded school, or whether they teach it a brand-new building, right?
Uh, not, not in totality, but yes. I mean, we're still going, we were still, we will still have to add teachers based on enrollment coming, but we're able to absorb within a school across the district as well, so it's not just...
The one-to-one.
It's not one-to-one, right? There's still going to be an additional cost, if that's what you're asking, yes. Will it be in totality with opening a new building? No.
So, you know, one of the things that this would get us by going to that, you know, a couple of years out, was we would go through another state budget cycle.
Correct.
Right? Obviously, fair school funding has been something that we've worked through, and we saw a bit of increase, but maybe, Ryan, you could speak a little bit, and I know you've talked about this in the past couple of board meetings. And we heard this a lot as we were going out and talking about levy, is, well, the state will step in, the state will do this, the state will do that. Obviously, the state hasn't called us and... Obviously, the state hasn't called us and pledged us, you know, several million dollars a year after the failed levy. But the more realistic thing is that the next budget cycle could come up. Can you talk about what that might look like, given what the fair school funding formula is and what we can reasonably expect to see from the state? Again, you know, anything magical can change. They could decide to give like every public school a billion dollars between now and then. Not likely, but can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, we'll be like every other school. What the state funding formula holds will be pretty impactful in what we do. For us, the continued phase-in of the formula is probably not the bigger piece. If they move, this year, we get 50% of the increase that we would otherwise get if the formula was fully funded. Next year, we'll get 2/3 of that increase. If they keep going into fiscal years 26 and 27, it would move to 83%. And then finally, in fiscal year 27, it will be 100% of the new funding formula operating like it's supposed to. Our problem is that our local capacity is growing faster than the way the state's algorithm provides us state funding. So that entire time that our funding percentage is going up, we are unfortunately losing money faster because the values of our community and the other factors that determine local capacity, which is also income, are increasing at a faster rate. What will be critical for us is to make sure that the state, at least every biennium, updates the cost sets. And what I mean by the cost sets is the state funding formula takes a look across the state of Ohio at all data that is used to compute what it costs to educate a student, teacher salaries, administrator salaries, extracurricular activities. The way the budget is written, they freeze it across the biennium. It does not change across the two years. And for example, the current biennial budget that we're using, the 24-25, we're looking back and using 2022 data. So it's already a couple of years behind and then it stays frozen from 24 to 25. We've got to be very active as a district with our legislators to not only have the formula continue to advance to the 83%, 100%, but we have to impress upon our legislators that by the time we get to fiscal year 2026, we can't continue to look at 2022 cost sets. At a minimum, they need to move it up to 24.
Even if we're doing, and that's a really important point and it's part of the advocacy that we've been doing. I know Dr. Davico and I were talking with Representative Lorenz about that just the other day, right? But the, even if we do all that, even if we update the cost sets and those sorts of things, what roughly are we expecting that that will get us? Will that make up the difference that we're seeing here where we would need an operational levy? You know, what is that going to do?
No. The way the formula works is the capacity of a district is looked at as a very key part of how much state funding they get. And all of those factors put together means that we will still, and we said this when we were out talking about the levy and state funding, we will always be, unless the formula just gets turned totally upside down on its head, we will always be predominantly locally funded. And the state funding formula will not magically create everything we need to stay off the ballot. It just, it just won't happen until we completely, you know, stop growing as a district. And even then, I'm not sure that that's going to happen because the way the formula builds on previous iterations, it views us as having the capacity to fund a lot of what we do locally. And so the answer, even though it was long-winded, I'll say quite bluntly is no. It will not keep us off the ballot. Even if everything we want to have happen magically happens exactly the way we want it to, no. We still have to seek operating money within the next two to three years.
It may just lessen what that total amount is.
That is correct.
And that's what we saw in the history from 2020 to the issue.
That's exactly right.
Going from 7.9, obviously there's PI built in there, but to a 3, 3 operating and a 1.25, you know, it's about half of what it was before.
Traditional asks, if you look at what we asked for operationally in 2020, it was 7.4 mills. What we asked for in 2016 was 5.9. And then what we asked for in 2011 was 7.9. And so we were seeking an operational ask, 3 mills with a mil and a quarter of PI. That was about half roughly of our normal ask that we've had the last three times we've been on the ballot. We tried to proactively combine a smaller ask with what we anticipate to be more state funding, but not enough state funding to just completely keep us off the ballot. It's not going to happen.
So at what point in the funding formula do we get the same as private school?
So unfortunately, because of all the factors I just mentioned, we're as close as we're ever going to get this year. When you throw in all of those extra factors, it brings our base cost per pupil down to where we get about $1,604 per pupil and we have finally eclipsed and we're just a little bit ahead of private schools. But all of the formula factors over the next two to three years will push us, quite honestly, back to a funding floor. We are being driven back down to where luckily, the state funding formula has what's called a 10% funding floor. We will never get less than 10% of the base cost per pupil, but we are headed right back to that funding floor in the next two school years. And ostensibly, we'll only be getting around $805 to $900 per pupil by the fiscal '26 school year.
I think it's important to keep in mind that this is something that's renewed every two years, right?
Correct.
So we, there's no long-term guarantee that this is even.
That's correct.
You know, a long-term strategy of school funding in Ohio.
It is not uncommon, even though Governor Dewine, I don't think runs this fall, but it is not uncommon when new governors come in, the entire funding formula of the predecessor gets scrapped completely. It's happened 10 times in my career practically.
And there's no guarantee we even get fair school funding for years five and six?
That's correct.
It's not law.
Nope. It's in the budget right now.
It's correct.
And it's not, even more specifically, it's not, they still have to negotiate the existence of year five and six, right? Not just the amounts, not just the cost sets, not, they have to just, even if it's going to be there, they have to decide.
The 100 and, I guess it would be 36 General Assembly could quite literally scrap everything about the fair school funding formula next spring. Sure could.
So in the interest of keeping us moving, obviously, there's a lot of things that are, that are baked into this, but it's certainly an option, whether it's to go on for no new millage, bond or nothing else, or no new millage or something approximating what we had now. Those are certainly decisions that would have to be made. We have to make those months in advance. I think it's July or so, we'd have to decide if we were going to go on in the fall.
Correct.
If we don't, it gives us a little more time to think. So then let's maybe talk about what the next option is beyond that, if we don't go in the fall. Or I suppose theoretically, if we went on the fall and failed.
Correct. And then, so we're moving into 25.
Sorry, Mr. Man, interrupt real quick. You asked about the elementary cost?
Yep.
So the elementary Peach Bowl Crossing right now is 30 million, 31 million? And Shell Meadows was closer to 21 million?
So Shell Meadows was built in 20, it was completed in 21, right? Built in 2021. So it was completed about three years ago and it was about $10 million cheaper than the one that we're opening this fall.
Yeah, and there's a, that one's an outlier because it was bid in 2020 just as COVID hit. And then, so we had significantly lower bid on that than what we expected. And then subsequently, we had inflation rates over the next period up to the bidding of Peach Bowl Crossing of 20% and 19% on the construction side. So you saw a significant jump between those two. And then we had some more off-site costs on Peach Bowl Crossing that we didn't have on Shell Meadows.
Right. We're not asking for COVID-2 to reduce those. So without that, but even between Peach Bowl and this, we're talking about 2.5 million or so difference, just in a year or so.
It would be good to see that like a cost per square foot.
Okay. You have a cost.
Say that again, Mr. O'Brien.
Cost per square foot.
It does, oh, sorry. It just does highlight that the longer you wait, when you've got $30 million buildings, when you've got $130 million, million-dollar buildings, these inflationary costs add up.
Yeah. I've got a cost per square foot that I shared with the Facilities Committee that I can email out to you.
Thank you.
Just for clarity's sake, back with scenario A, we talked about a later operational levy. Do we have an idea of what that might be? I know that things will change from now until that point, but is there a ballpark? Because these other ones have operational millage kind of included. So do we know if that's going to be about the same amount or is it going to be more or less?
So which iteration are you referring to?
I'm looking at scenario A because I'm just trying to get a sense of what the cost will be for each of the different options.
So are you asking if in scenario A, we were to go operationally, what would it be?
I'm asking if we did what's proposed, which is no new millage bond and then at some point later, coming back and asking for an operational levy, presumably around 2026.
Those are coming.
But on this one, she's asking, yeah, we'll get here, but I think if, we have, we have 26.
I guess that's what I'm trying to, that's all I'm trying to clarify is if that operational ask that we would be asking for separately in scenario A is the same or similar to the operational asks that we're looking at in the different, in scenario B, for example? Am I making sense or no?
I follow. Six or eight mil range like we have in the other ones?
Yeah.
It would be in 26, so I, my assumption is that we'd be around.
Okay.
Operating.
Yeah, I suppose what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is A is going to be what you see in B or C.
Okay.
With operations.
Gotcha. Yep, that's all I was trying to.
Yes.
Are we ready to move forward to B?
Yep.
So scenario B would be going on the ballot in 25. So two construction options are presented for consideration here. The first proposes three buildings at no new millage, bond in the second, five at no new millage. Both options are presented alongside, now here, we have a six-mil operating levy. In construction timelines, you can see the same where the construction timelines are as far as opening, capital improvement implications, forecast implications in discussion. But you can see just the conversation that we were just having about the escalated inflation cost for construction. You'll start to see this now, the more we go out, as far as longer we wait, you can see now elementary 18 and 19, 35.1 million each. So that's 1.6 million over the 24 cost. So we highlighted here, high school five now is 6, 146 million, so 6.9 million over the 24 cost.
Which is only about 5%.
Yeah.
You didn't put a too dramatic inflation assumption in there.
No, the 5% is the average that the Facilities Committee settled on for outlying, outgoing, outlying years. Some of the softer costs for furniture and some of the other things weren't seeing same construction inflation. And we actually dropped when we, the bids that we had received for elementaries 18 and 19 came in about 3%. Now, that was just a changeover from having those three years of high inflation. So we settled on a 5% average on that because we're not expecting.
Right, that would be like three for labor, two for materials. Gives you the five.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That could have some risk.
Yeah.
That doesn't pay us.
Yeah, and there is in the, in the number for bonds for capital shortfall and other contingencies, there is a contingency in there and some off-site cost numbers included.
Just to be clear, the idea is even with those increased costs, we'd still be able to do this as no new millage for the bond?
Yes.
Yes.
So that is going to be a continued conversation that we need to have with the county auditor because the other thing that will happen is the longer we're off the ballot and existing bond service millage is more than enough to pay existing debt service, the auditor is going to do what we would want them to do, want him to do, but to do in a way that doesn't cause us to then turn right around and maybe a year later, raise it right back up. So the auditor will want to lower and should lower the millage because we only want to collect the debt service that we need. But we'll have to work very carefully, Mr. Keitz, so that the reduction in debt service millage doesn't go so much that when we go on the ballot, if it passes, it turns right around and whatever it dropped, you just add it right back on.
But to be fair, that's what we tried to propose this spring.
That is correct.
Correct.
That is exactly what we proposed in the spring. You know, if you looked at what we did in the spring, we came down a mil and a quarter on debt service. The permanent improvement levy was a mil and a quarter. And although they were, you know, six months out of phase, they quite literally offset each other. And so we will continue to work with the auditor such that we can drop that debt service millage, but not so far that we can't still try to accomplish no additional mills. If ultimately, it doesn't work out and the millage is dropped and we just simply couldn't do no additional mills, you're seeing the worst-case scenario. Very likely that we won't even have to collect that because remember all the factors that go into, for example, in scenario B, you look at 2.62 mills for $276 million roughly. That is assuming that issue all by itself, 5% interest. What is the average millage that would have to be collected if there were no other debt service and no growth of the district? All of those worst-case scenario factors. By way of example, we've had debt service issues in the past where we've been authorized to collect 2.5, something like that, and only had to collect half a mil. So we're either no additional or absolute minimum. And that's one of the pros of having a district that value grows.
So I just want to sort of reiterate this point because this was an area of confusion about the levy.
Yes.
When you look on the ballot, when you went to vote, you know, it said a 3-mil operating levy, well, I didn't bring these out, but it's, you know, 4.25 plus, this, at that point, it was 2.72 mills that was put on the ballot. And what we were trying to explain to the community was, we were able, even though the auditor would have allowed us to collect that, to do it, we believed and we had a track record of doing, that we did not actually need to collect that to do it.
And passed a resolution.
And passed a resolution and it was actually on the auditor's site, if you went to look at it, to show that we're, that's a great point, right? The, the challenge, as these things continue to go up, and especially if what you're saying is the auditor's suggesting overtime, which is exactly what they should do. But the challenge becomes, we may not be able to do that. Now, if we do have to, have to collect millage, we're going to be upfront with the community and say, we, this is something where we'll have to collect millage, right? Or, you know, we believe that in all likelihood, we'll have to. But that becomes another challenge of all of this compared to where we were in the spring where we said we were pretty confident we wouldn't have to do that.
Correct. Moving forward, there will always be a statutorily required, hey, worst-case scenario, this is what we have to put on the ballot. But we will always then follow that up with, based on our analysis, we will either be able to do no additional mills or this is what we know we'll need to collect to pay debt service. I can go on the record right now and say that unless, you know, the economy and everything just goes totally to pot, and even then, it's just probably not going to work out that whatever is seen on the ballot, we won't have to collect that much. Hopefully, it's none. Hopefully, it's none.
So again, kind of, I don't know, maybe a summary. I like to always benefits and drawbacks of each scenario. So in this one, it's one levy with both the building to buildings and funding our operations. So that can be both a benefit or a drawback, I suppose, depending on how you look at it. The drawback from this one, at least compared to scenario A, is we've got a delay of one year for two elementary schools and a delay of one year for the middle school and the high school as well, correct? So then at that point, we've got our, our middle school utilization's up to 109% before we can open the new middle school. Our high school utilization is up to 112% average before we can open a new high school.
Delay in two years from FFC.
But at the same time, we don't have a split levy with this one where we're trying to follow it up with funding at a later time.
This would be all one vote for operational and bond, no PI. Because again, the strategy of using bond dollars then for fund capital. I do want to emphasize, because when you said one year pushed out.
I might have gotten that.
Is it two?
Two years.
Yeah, two, two years for the elementaries.
For the elementaries, yeah.
Yeah. Because originally, if we would have passed in the spring, we'd be opening in.
But one year from the last scenario.
Yes, that's, yeah.
So but from the original spring, it's two years. And, and just for example, because we talk a lot about enrollment. So in, right now, and this is based on data from the Facilities Committee, so in '27, '28, in our elementaries with doing nothing, we're showing minus 29 classrooms. So for us, minus 29 classrooms, that's an entire elementary building. And so again, that's why we made a decision last, at the last board meeting, to do some gradual redistricting because based on where we sit in '27, '28, without a new building, we're going to have to continue to make these decisions as far as redistribution of, redistricting or student enrollment to pocket redistrict across the district as well as adding modulars. So we're still in that space as far as making those decisions over the next couple of years.
And the costs that come with it, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think that's important is this year was around $500,000 for Cheshire to do this. Obviously, there's a one-time cost than, you know, an ongoing.
Yes.
But it's, doing that on a larger scale basis over time becomes a very costly endeavor.
Yes.
And that's for all grade levels, right? Not just elementary?
Yeah, so we'll start in elementary, but we will eventually, because I talked about when we get to the capacity issues in middle school and down the road, high school, we may be faced with making decisions without additional facilities, yes.
Well, I was thinking about the levy fatigue concept again. And so we were on the ballot in 2020 and came back in '24. And even that gap of time was, people were still feeling the fatigue with that gap. Now here, we, we were on in '24. Now we're talking about, you know, fall of '24, a real quick turnaround, or 2025.
Just to give you a quick.
I mean, I might be opening a can of worms here, but you know, what's, what are we looking at in terms of, and then when do we come back? You know, saying, we come back, if we go, you know, 2025 ballot issue, that's covering, you know, what are we looking at in terms of making that stretch?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting back into, because of the continued growth, but we just had a conversation on state funding, lack of state funding, getting back into the three, four-year cycle. So we would continue to analyze that. I don't see it falling off after, if '20 and '25, until after fiscal year '28. You'll see in the next scenario where we would show, based on our policy, at that time, three years. But again, we would always, like we would say three years, but we would try to stretch it to four or five. But you'll see that in the next scenario. The if waiting till '26, so we last passed in '20. If we waited till '26, that would be unprecedented for us if it was approved where it would be additional tax dollars. That would be unprecedented for Olentangie, a six-year gap between levies. Since I can remember, we went back, way back to what, 19, 30 years ago?
You have exhibits that help to spell some of that out. If you'll come from the very back of the packet, six pages forward, the exhibit looks like this, and it says six mils highlighted. That gives you a sense, again, from the very back of the packet, just come forward six pages. That provides you with, you can see what I did was extended the forecast all the way out to the '29, '30 school year. So that would substantiate that even with a levy in '25, it starts collecting in '26, we're probably still looking at a four to five-year at best window. There's a lot of variables that change. But the line I would have you look at is line 6.01, excessive revenues and other financing sources, over or under. When you start to see, that's a fancy way of saying, do we have a budget surplus or a budget deficit? And those budget deficits, even with the passage of the levy, don't disappear completely.
Well, and I just want to highlight the, the cost of the community because we want to be very sensitive to this, right? So the, the measure that we, we put on in the spring, the operating mills were three mills. You know, you're collecting those over time, you know, three, six, nine, 12, 15 over time. If we pass it next spring, we're talking about needing six mills, right? So in that year, you've already made up what the three mills were the prior two years. And then you just need to keep going on. The cost to community is higher the longer we wait.
That's correct.
Right? And, and it's that compounding effect. I think that's part of the proactivity of this that's really important to stress is by going on, we're hoping to save the community money. I heard a lot as we're going on, and I get, I very much get this perspective, but who's looking out for the taxpayers in all this, right? I think that's what that proactive approach is trying to do. As we fall back a little bit, as we, we have to wait a little bit, there, there's certainly some short-term relief in that your taxes are as high for this year.
Correct.
But the realities of the situation, the realities of that growth mean that that higher cost is going to impact you more in the two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year than a three-mil levy.
That's right. And again, it goes back to the proactive strategy of being on last spring. And we're, you know, and I'll say this, we continue to try to find ways across this large district where we can be efficient. We showed, I think it was 30-some million dollars in savings or cost avoidance since 2020. We will continue to do that as a district, but we're not going to be able to save our way out of not asking for more money.
Right.
We, it's, it's going to be impossible.
Right.
And add into that, fair funding is not going to save us either.
Correct.
So savings, fair funding, that's not the, even together, that's not going to get her done.
And it's not that we won't do those things.
Absolutely.
I think that's real important.
That's what I'm saying. We're going to continue to do it, but.
Certainly helps and every dollar counts, but, but still, it's just, it's a broader problem that we're facing. And, I mean, this was part of the challenge, I think, as I was going around and talking to people about the levies. This is all horribly complex, right? We've spent an hour and 40 minutes here and we've only scratched the surface.
Yes.
As we went around and we tried to have some of these community conversations and talk to folks about this, I, I don't begrudge people for being confused by it, right? That, that, I think it's probably, you know, the, 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 part of this is just to make that, that difficult and that's not what we want to do. We want to try and simplify and make it as clear as we can for people. I think the upshot of all of this is we're acting in good faith, we're trying to do all these things, and yet the problem persists because of the nature of the growth, because of the realities of the state funding formula and because of some of those other things that we continue to talk about. And if we have a little bit of time at the end, I mean, we had somebody, a couple board meetings go that wanted to talk about development and ways that we can be more proactive with the local community. Those are all great ideas, right? I mean, none of these things are, are being shot down. It's just not, you know, having a, a broader plan to, to cut down on a few houses in Delaware County is not going to solve this issue, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think that speaks to a lot of, you know, people think about it maybe in terms of their household budget or even if they're running a business, and they think there's ways that we can make things work to keep things solvent in my house or in my business or that sort of thing. And I think there's assumptions that we can get money from other sources or that the state will step in or that developers can provide some of the money or we can shift some of this to commercial versus residential and that sort of thing. But those sorts of things that you would assume might be available to us just aren't available to us, right? So that's why we're, we're discussing the situation that we're in now.
And, yeah, and a lot of times we, in those scenarios, will hit a dead end. But we will continue to have conversations with our townships. And we do, and will continue to have conversations on the impact to the district. And we referenced it earlier, I think, Mr. Lester, central Ohio will continue to grow. And the state house is pro-development and people have to go somewhere and they're going to places that have good schools. So I don't see the growth stopping. Obviously, we'll continue to have conversations, but I don't think that we have the power to stop it.
Right. Yeah. And I know I just said this 30 seconds ago, but I'll reiterate it again. Like that we are looking at every possible avenue. Because if we can buy an extra day of operating costs, great. If we can make sure that we can resurface that middle school track by adjusting bus routes, great. But that, that is not going to be it. I mean, that's not going to solve everything. All right. Why don't we move to scenario C then and talk about what it looks like if we go into 2026? To really, now we're really pushing it out. Now the costs really start to decrease and we start getting into these more challenging things. Especially when I say push it out, I mean, that's, it's either decide to go then or we go in '24 and it fails, we go in '25 and it fails. There's some element of that as well.
Can I also clarify that for the '25 scenario B and we're discussing scenario C, spring and fall? Does it change? No, no major difference whether we do it in the spring or the fall?
The timelines actually don't fall on a calendar year. So the, the difference is spring and fall. We do it in the spring, for example, the elementaries, we can bid those immediately because they're designed. So in the spring, we still meet that construction window. If we go in the fall, we still have to wait, again, as I was saying earlier about the, the weather, we still wouldn't be able to start until March or April on the construction. So that's why the, when you look at the timelines, they don't fall with the, the calendar year. It, it switches based on when we go fall or spring. So the, the cuts kind of an off, it's more on, almost on a fiscal year. That, that's why with like a high school, one of the scenarios we talked about was if we go ahead and get the design bid through documents, construction documents now, we could actually pick up a year when we go. So by spending that 2 million plus on the, the fee to get that done would actually save us a year's worth of 5% of $100 million, ain't seven million savings down the road. But with the high school, it would be three years. And if we, so if we go in this, in the fall on a high school, it doesn't help us because we still can't have the documents ready by the spring. If we go in the spring, for example, in '26, we could have the documents done to be able to start construction in the spring, or spring of '27. So that, it's, it's just off a little bit, doesn't fall nice and neat based on the weather and when we could have documents done.
Another complexity.
Yeah.
But I do want to emphasize because we, it's in, at the beginning of the appendix, in the first bullet, there are other considerations about high school five and the design as far as staying ahead of that design and paying for it now and how much money it could save us over time when we do construct the buildings. So you can see the number, the savings on the construction would be, Jeff has $6.6 million here. So you can see the pattern. So scenario C, again, two options are presented for consideration. No new millage bond with three buildings, no new millage bond with five buildings and operational millage for three years of need at eight mills. So you can see again, escalated cost by waiting on construction. Now for the elementaries, 18 and 19 at 36.9 million, increase of 1.7 million over the '25 cost. High school five at 153, 7.2 million over. However, I just talked about if we continue with the design, we could see a savings there in the high school. The bonds and capital needs shortfall and other contingencies for five years at 61. So it increases the no new millage ask to 288. And then in the five, same increase in costs with the no new millage at 400 million. And again, we talked about challenges and implications with pushing buildings out as far as enrollment. You can see the timeline for when the buildings would open. And then the eight mills approved in '26 and state funding remaining status quo. So again, there's still conversation over two years on what that would look like and the impact it would have on Olentangie as well as where we would be on what the actual ask is. But we're estimating it eight mills for operating here. And then Ms. Reiver goes out to kind of what you were saying, passing in '26, it would be a six-year gap between when we collected additional millage for operations. However, the longer we run out, the quicker we got to go back to, based on Mr. Jenkins' forecast. But again, there's a lot of things that we'll have to answer in that time. By the time we would get to '26 and then for sure, if we pass to '26, out to '20, fiscal '29, fiscal year third.
You touched on state funding. So for state funding, we do get funding for operations, but we typically have not for capital. Is there a scenario where we qualify for OFCC?
I mean, the state capital budget is out of phase by one year with the operating budget. It's pretty exceptional for schools to get anything from the capital budget. And when they do, it's renovating a theater. Or, I mean, a lot of times that's tied to a broader public use. You usually have to show that it's not just for school use. So, and I would answer that with not likely.
And Jeff, we're going through an analysis.
Yeah, we're, we're currently going through, had presented that, she's been over a year ago now to the board about the process with OFCC. We're still working through that. There was quite a delay in getting started. While we expect to get a master plan created, maybe as early as by the end of the year, this year, we don't expect to be up for funding for several years from the OFCC. So the idea of what we're trying to participate in now is to be reimbursed down the road when we do qualify for construction work that we do now. But as far as getting help with construction immediately to help offset that cost or have less of an ask, we're not expecting to qualify by the state's measure of equity for, for several years out.
And even if we would qualify, would we have to give up some design choices?
Yes, we just completed a study of that as well with the OFCC. As we were discussing whether, what we would do with the design with high school five, for example, we went through a complete analysis and what we found was we would go through and have to change a lot of design things to qualify. And the net gain based on our, our percentage we would get back from the state was we would spend about as much making the changes, get less of a building for the same and end up with this, carrying the same cost on our end. And, and keep in mind, the other part of the OFCC is they don't, they don't fund a lot of the things that we put in. But they don't fund an auditorium, they don't fund an athletic stadium. There's a lot of those things that they don't fund that would still be local, local initiatives that we would have to fund as well. So there may be some support down the road or reimbursement, but not anything that's going to happen in time to help us with the construction, construction of the current, current need.
Thank you.
In, in this scenario too, I'll, I'll just state, by waiting to '28, '29 with the elementaries, we're, we're now 43 classrooms short. So again, same conversation as far as how do we accommodate? And that would be through redistricting overflow, modular classrooms. So.
And those take away from those other choices, right? So as we're making that choice, then it affects all of the other, you know, discretionary sorts of things. The, the challenge here, obviously, this is where we've stopped at this point. The challenge is if you go through any of these and they fail or you go to this one and they fail, then we're really in some dire straits.
We're, we're having a large, a really large cut list.
Right.
Which now the board would have to approve in the levy cycle. If we, if we have a cut list, we'd have to do a resolution.
Right.
So we'd have to have a lot of conversation on what that looks like in Olentangie. And in '26, if we did not pass, we would wake up in a different district.
Yeah.
And just to point out too, scenario C still shows that in fiscal year '29, we only have 27 days of cash. So this is with passing.
With passing.
We still don't have enough cash on hand as we're supposed to.
So that would be a three, three year from '26. Say we go in the fall '26, then yeah, we'd be back on the, on the ballot.
Okay.
yeah, we'd be back on the ballot in about, right, three years. And that's based on this. Obviously, there's a, there are a lot of factors that come into play.
Right.
Okay, coming along.
I don't want to be here all night. I apologize. But just to kind of talk about some of the other things that people propose, and that, to make sure that, you know, we're addressing things that the community brought to us, is, well, I heard in this other district, they did an income tax for people, you know, exempting seniors and exempting, you know, people on social security and that sort of thing. What's the reality of that and the feasibility of something like that? Have we talked about that?
Ryan, do you want to talk about an income tax?
So there's two types of income taxes in Ohio.
Sorry.
For school districts.
I know. I just want to be thorough.
I want to make clear, first of all, that you must live in the school district for it to apply. It's meaningless if you work in the school district, but anyone who lives in the Oland Tangee local school district, no matter where they work in the state of Ohio, would then pay an income tax. If it is the traditional income tax, essentially look at your Ohio adjusted gross income. So think about your box one wages and your W-2. You're going to back out deductions and other write-offs, and what's left is your taxable base. If you are earned income tax, what's in box one of your W-2 is what you are charged on. Why is that an exceptional thing?
Straight up.
Yeah, straight up. No deductions, no...
No mortgage interest deduction.
No mortgage interest deductions.
Childcare deductions.
None of that. Why though is that in some communities a good thing? Well, retirees don't get W-2s, they get $10.99. So what does that mean? A lot of elderly folks would not have to pay the income tax if you do earned income. But the flip side of that, the downside, is that most people know that your W-2 box one is going to be offset by several things before you get to your bottom line taxable for the state of Ohio. So for the average, working, actively employed person, take a look at box one of your W-2, apply the income tax rate, that's what you're going to pay. And I think they can go as high as 2.5%.
So just... There's no offset for taxes paid in other jurisdictions?
Right.
Correct.
Already comes right off the top.
That's correct.
So, you know, at this, at the last level, we were saying that for a family that had a, with the four and a quarter mills that we were proposing, a family that was in a house, the average house in the district, $400,000, was going to pay about $595, I believe, give or take, a year total for that levy.
Yep.
If we were to say, put a 1% income tax, right, your family, if you make $100,000 a year as a family.
$1,000.
$1,000.
Yep. It, it almost will always be spreading the burden out greater with a property tax. Because let's, we, we had these statistics when we did our circuit of levy meetings. The median income is roughly on the order of $130,000 or so in the Oland Tangee district. The median household value is, let's just ballpark it and say, $500,000. We knew that that $500,000 home was going to have about a $600 real estate tax bill. That same $150,000 home would have a $1,500 income tax bill.
So the difference, and we're just talking, the difference is, income tax, and I'm, I'm thinking, income tax continues to grow as your income does?
Correct.
But property taxes are the, are the same, but actually, the effective rate goes down.
Effective rate goes down, you only get a very, very marginal increase each year based on inside mills and new property value. For us, you're talking, you know, on average, $3 to $5 million of additional real estate income taxes, which, I get it, it sounds, you know, I'd love to have an extra $3 to $5 million in my own personal pocket, but for this district, it does, it simply does not keep up. It, it can't. But that's the way the law is written. It's written such that a dramatic increase, or any increase in value, does not just automatically increase taxes. That, that's the protection for our taxpayers, and I think it's a good law. But the flip of that is, whatever we get in initial collections on a levy, is pretty much what we're going to get in perpetuity. Very marginal, marginal growth. But yes, an income tax, as the adjusted gross income of a community increases, so do your collections. In the previous district I was in, a 1% income tax was the equivalent of nearly 15 mills.
So in that previous?
This district I was in, we weren't on the ballot operationally. The last time was 2011. And I keep up with a few people back there. There still is no current plan to go back on the ballot operationally. Now, there's other factors that would make that community different than this.
Other attendants, is it relative, there a steady state?
They're growing, not like, not like we are. But, yeah, it's, it's not a fix-all, but certainly, if you would like to see more information about that, that can be provided.
And that's essentially like in perpetuity too, right? Unless the board decides to repeal it for some reason?
You can do an income tax levy for the same types of periods of time that you can do property taxes. I believe up to 10 years, if you want something that you have to constantly renew, or continuing period of time, which is what most districts do in the Columbus outer belt anyway. Other schools, when they pass a levy, they realize with the growth of Columbus, it's not like in five years, you're probably not going to need it. So almost every ballot issue that schools have passed in the Columbus area for who knows how long you look back, are for continuing periods of time. That's correct.
So just to be clear, if we were hypothetically interested in that, what does that look like? You have to go on the ballot to get that approved?
That is correct. It would be a levy like any other levy. The timelines are a bit different, but they're reasonably similar, 120, 150 days. But you get permission essentially of all of the powers that be, Ohio Department of Taxation, you know, Ohio Department of Education, and the difference would be that a voter would see, instead of a property tax in mills, they would see a ballot issue that says, an income tax rate as a percent. And traditional or earned income.
So for some of our residents and communities that are part of RITA or City of Powell, they would have federal income tax, state income tax, RITA, potential city income tax, and the school.
That's correct. There is no, and that was a common source of confusion in the other district where I came from. We would constantly get calls from residents. There'd be two ti, two types of calls. The, the school district income tax is administered and handled completely by the Ohio Department of Taxation. So what happens is, is it is a tax on your income, it is collected with your Ohio income taxes, and then quarterly, the Ohio Department of Taxation distributes a quarterly settlement to a school district. Well, without fail, people who lived in a city that had a municipal tax felt like one was due for the other, and we would get calls that would say, where do I send my city taxes? And we would have to explain, that's not us, that's the city of Pickerton. Or we would get the call, how do I remit to you my school district income tax? And we would say, you don't, that's through the Ohio Department of Taxation. So, and I'm, I'm not just trying to point out negative things, those are just some of the things that, yeah, people will, will have a learning curve on, that's a common question, I'll offset my municipal taxes with my school district tax. Nope, that's, they do not offset each other.
So, I mean, this goes to the broader point earlier of trying to be set set to the individual taxpayer, right? I mean, there, there are certainly options that are available to us that are not just levies, that are not just on this cycle. They have serious drawbacks, right? Very serious drawbacks. And that's part of trying to have this conversation pretty broadly and openly with folks, so that they can see, we're not trying to hide the ball on it. It just, when we face these potential shortfalls, when we face this enrollment growth, we may have to start thinking about some of these paths, which are not going to be terribly savory for folks.
Sounds like the typical family with kids in the district would pay much more in this income tax scenario than on this property tax levy scenario that we're, that we've all been kind of, our traditional levies.
That would be my assessment. You will, I suppose, there's a inflection point that we could calculate, you know, what would the value of a home have to be compared to your income level? But normally, I'm assuming that when you get into homes that have values, you know, a million dollars or more, you probably have incomes that would still pay more in income tax.
Yeah.
So I want to be sensitive to the time here. It's 8:30. We've, we've had a lot of good discussion, and still, we're scratching the surface, right? There, there's still a lot of stuff that goes into this. And this is really, again, going back to that point of what we saw on the levy trail as we're talking about this, it's very complex. There's a lot of factors that need to go into it, and it's really important that we try to provide as much information to the community so that people can understand the scenarios that we're facing, as well as the steps that we're trying to do to be proactive on it. What I said at the outset, one of the things that we, why I talk about it just a little bit is takeaway some, and some additional steps. I think we got some of that out as we, we went through here. But I know, you know, this bit certainly, we've talked about a lot, is getting more community input in this stuff, right? There's a lot of things that we talked about tonight, that it's, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this, we can do that. I think hearing from the community and getting them educated on some of these issues is going to be really important. So at least one takeaway for me, from this is, we've got a lot of scenarios, we'll continue to talk about it at board meetings, but we can also find ways to engage the community on it more broadly. And then beyond that, you know, we talked about a lot of things, including talking about with our other elected officials, which we're doing on a regular basis. We've, we're continuing to have some of those discussions about ways that we could impact the broader Delaware County growth. I don't know what the right dramatic word is for that, the, the explosion of growth that we're seeing, but that's going to be something that's continuing to be on the agenda. Again, we will be talking about these scenarios and where we specifically go on them. I want to thank everyone for, you know, really providing some thoughtful questions.
I have one comment that, you know, we had a gentleman come into our last board meeting, maybe not the last, the one before, about how the school boards should be more active in planning and zoning at the local level, which I think is a long shot at best. That any township trustee or any township, planning and zoning would cede any of their voting authority to us. So while a neat idea, very impractical.
Right.
Not going to...
And it, obviously, we have conversations with these folks, but we're talking about us getting directly at the table.
I understood, I understood what you meant, but I don't want to get
No, that's right.
People carried away and say, oh, well, now Oland Tangee's going to be driving zoning decisions.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, there's nothing in the charters or revised code or anything that says that we would have any say in those decisions.
So, yeah, no, no, but that, that's a really important point. It's really critical. So I want to thank everybody for all the time and attention. I hope, you know, people take a look at this and listen to some of the discussion. We'll continue to pump out that information. But with that, unless anybody else has any other comment, recognizing it's about 8:30, and we've kept our, and we're going to have another meeting tomorrow night, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion. All right. And other, the only discussion I'll note is that we have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, our regular board meeting, where we will talk about all sorts of other great stuff. All right. Hearing that, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Daverco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned.